I will go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody, to the Norton Planning Board's virtual meeting of Tuesday, March 9th, 2021, as we rapidly approach the full year of life in COVID. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing a limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Town of Norton Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information, general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a greater requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Norton's website, that's NortonMA.org. For this meeting, participate in any of the following ways: join online by video, please click the Zoom link posted on the agenda, or if you are using the Zoom app, you can use meeting ID 6389291060. There is also a dial-in number with a meeting ID available on the agenda for this meeting. You can also view the meeting on Norton Cable at access Channel 15, or the next day on the Norton Media Center's YouTube page. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort we made to ensure the public can adequately access proceedings in real time, be it technological means. In addition, please feel free to email questions to the board ahead of the meeting or during the meeting to Paul D. Giuseppe, the Town Planner, whose email address is listed on the agenda. Additionally, you'll find meeting materials available on the Norton Planning Board's website. In the event that we are unable to ensure to pull off this meeting, desire our best efforts, we will post on the Town of Norton's website an audio of video recording, transcript or other record of the proceedings as soon as possible thereafter. And just as a short aside, even though we are in a Zoom virtual meeting, I would ask anybody who is attending, members of the public or otherwise, to please treat the comment section and the chat function as part of this meeting as part of the meeting. If comments posted in the chat are pertinent, they may be included as part of the record and minutes of this meeting. So now that I am done with that, I'll call everybody to order here. We do have six members of the board present. I think Steve will probably be hopping on shortly.
He texted me he's getting on soon.
Yep. So in terms of planning board business and policies, I don't believe we have anything on the line for that. There are no bills and warrants posted in the folder, Paul. There's nothing else that we need to take action on in that respect, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we do not have any minutes in the folder, so I assume that we'd have possibly a double set at our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So that takes care of A, B, and C. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing for special permit 7694, which is 312 Taunton Avenue. It's an application for a site plan approval for a 3,500 square foot accessory structure. The owner and applicant listed there. I believe we have back-to-back ConDigm presentations here, Paul. Is that the...
Yes. Yes, and I don't know for the first one, Mark, Jeff, if Mr. Sullivan is...I don't see him on here, but I just want to point out that Pat Brennan did the peer review for 312 is here as well.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Mark, I guess I will see the virtual floor to you. If you just want to make a quick overview of what you're looking to do on this site, which is a little bit of an oddity in this location, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, compared to other ConDigm sites, but again, Mark Dibb with ConDigm Engineering Group. The project tonight is located at 312 Taunton Ave. in Norton. I have screen sharing on full plans here.
Yeah, you do.
Okay.
And we see it.
Yep, so this is the plan set. So the site is located at 312 Taunton Ave. in Norton. On the Locust map, Taunton Ave. is also Route 140. The Norton-Taunton Line is located here, so to the south is Taunton, to the north is Norton. It is currently zoned industrial, and we're here tonight for site plan review. We have an accessory use structure in excess of the 2,500 square foot threshold. It is proposed to be 3,500 square feet. I'm going to go to the existing conditions plan. So the existing site has an existing building on it in the past that was used as a model home for a real estate company office. There's the building, some parking in front, some existing drainage that was installed. The site is also existing, is on town water, and had...
Mark, it appears you muted yourself inadvertently there for a second.
It said the host, well, on the host, sorry about that.
There you go.
Okay. So again, so the land in Norton consists of 0.94 acres, and the land in Taunton consists of 1.99 acres, for a total of 2.93 acres. There is some wetland way to the back of the site. This is the 100-foot buffer, and all the work on the site as well outside of conservation jurisdiction has been reviewed by conservation, and they have determined the same thing. So again, there's one access drive off Taunton Ave. that exists, and this existing building has been used in the past for some commercial use. I'm going to go to the proposed. So the proposed site plan consists of continuing to use the existing building as an office for the owner, or the future owner, but current applicant's landscaping business, Robert Sullivan's landscaping business. We're going to clean up the front sidewalk and make more parking spaces along the front, including handicap with handicap access, some additional parking spaces along the side, which all meet parking requirements, as well as some additional pavement, gravel area, and the proposed building, which to be used as a garage for the landscape business for the trucks, trailers, and the gravel area will also be used for some miscellaneous trailer equipment. And what there won't be is, you know, piles of loam, piles of, different piles of material on the site. This is solely for the machinery and personnel for parking and office use. We've provided erosion control around the development. The layout is such so that they can come in, access parking, access to the back of the building, in and out of the garage. The site, this is the grading and drainage plan. So we've proposed a compliant drainage system that meets the stormwater management standards. All the roof runoff is being directed into subsurface infiltration along with all of the pavement area. It's being treated as required, TSS above 80%, I think actually 90%, and then it does have an emergency overflow that's typically designed in sites like this. The perimeter grading, we've shown erosion control blankets where it may be needed for slopes of three to one. One thing we've also done is kept the development inside the Town of Norton, and we've confirmed with the City of Taunton that under this proposal, there's no requirements as far as permitting with the City of Taunton. To date, we've also, Amory Engineers has, the project was sent out to them. On February 8th, we received a peer review letter from them as well. We responded on March 1st with some back and forth, and on March 2nd, we received a follow-up letter that their concerns were addressed. I believe that covers the proposal. Again, it's for basically a family-run landscapers that's actually living out of the Blue Star Business Park and relocating here, and it's to serve their uses, have a place to store inside most of their equipment, and they look forward to utilizing the property. Again, it's owned industrial, so the use is appropriate, and you could have a letter from the building commissioner saying, you know, this type of use is appropriate for the property. At this time, if you have any questions, start off with that.
Thank you, Mark. I think you mentioned that Amory had reviewed the project, and we do have Pat Brennan on the call as well. Pat, if you want to just give a short summary of your peer review of the project, and it does appear that, and from the documentation that we have, that your initial comments were mostly housekeeping-related to a degree, and everything's been addressed?
My original comments, I had eight comments. The first seven all had to do with the drainage design and stormwater and erosion control. Then the last comment was in relation to a guardrail. With the plan that you're looking at right now, right along the Taunton Line, there's like a one-on-one riprap slope there, so it's a pretty steep slope there, so I had recommended that they install a guardrail on the top of that slope so that, just to prevent any vehicles from accidentally driving over and going down that slope. So they did that as well. Like Mark said, they did address my comments, and, you know, the stormwater design, even though he's got the overflow, it's actually designed to infiltrate all storms up to, including the 100-year storm, so it's a pretty robust stormwater design, and, you know, all of the stormwater will be recharged on-site, so it's a good design.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions about this project from members of the board? Mark, I guess your presentation was very effective. I'm not sure if, I think this is...
Speed it up.
And I think this is one of those sites that's always been interesting. I think this is one of those heard stories about Norton's odd zoning issues, and somebody purchased a house thinking, purchased this property thinking it was going to be suitable for a house, but it was zoned industrial, so they couldn't do that, or something like that, but this seems like an appropriate use for the site for me.
We've had a number, Chair, we've actually had a number of calls in the past about this site, particularly from young or newly married couples wanting to buy their first home. They see this, they want it, you know, and they come to us, and we tell them, you can't, it's never been a home, it's zoned industrial, so there's at least five times we've had that conversation. I really don't want to do that, breaking people's hearts on this, so anyway.
Okay. If no members of the board have any comments, then I would look for an appropriate action there for...
This is Joe. I'll move that we approve the site plan as proposed.
I'll second that. Oh, or Steve can have it.
Go ahead, Julie.
Well, thank you, Joe, for the motion, and Steve for the second, since both of you seated, and I'm just going to pick one. Is there any further discussion on the motion from members of the board? Hearing none, I will go down through the members as I see them on my screen here. Julie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Orrin? Orrin, you're muted.
Yeah, yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The site plan for 312 Taunton Ave. is approved, and we'll move forward with that, issuing that as appropriate.
You know, I'll start drafting that tomorrow, bro.
Okay. The next item on the agenda, sticking with Mark Dibb and ConDigm Engineering, is 227 East Main Street, which is an application for a special permit, site plan modification to remove a building and replace it with parking. This is in reference to Blue Star Business Park. This has been continued a few different times, but in terms of, just to summarize where we are, Mark, do you want to give a quick overview of what has transpired since we last saw you regarding this project?
Yes, so we also, in parallel, were going to conservation, and we, conservation requested a peer review of the drainage. Worsley Witten, who did the entire parking, did a peer review, Janet Bernardo, and we have answered their questions, no further comments. We did have a hearing last night that had a mix-up in some kind of notification or on the agenda. They were apologized for not being able to proceed with the hearing. However, as a result of speaking with the agents and previous comments from the commission, they've liked everything they've seen, required just a peer review, and order of conditions has been drafted, an amended order of conditions has been drafted, and comfortable that it's going to be approved. I think Paul may have had a discussion with Jennifer today, discussed that as well. Nothing has changed on the proposal. Again, we're proposing to remove this commercial building, replace it with the parking lot. Just happens that the existing buildings in this area are, is Robert Sullivan's garage that is now moving to 312 Taunton Ave., so it's had these two things in hand.
Are there any additional questions from the board? Maybe some of us, Jeff, we have also... Okay. Thank you, Mark. Do any members of the board have any specific questions regarding this requested modification? Hearing a lot of silence out there again. Now, Mark, just to make sure I'm remembering correctly, this request was made because that area, this being area of parking is going to be cordoned off, so to speak, for the tenant of the adjacent building, is that correct?
Correct, yes. It'll be for this tenant, and technically, according to your bylaws, we were adding parking spaces which triggered the special permit to be revised, but it's being solely cordoned off for the tenants in this building.
Okay. Good to know I haven't lost quite all of my memory yet, but just to restate that for everybody here, I think we went through this a decent amount of detail previously at a previous meeting, but I will once again kind of see if the board has any further questions about the specific project. Otherwise, I would look for us to take action on it further. If you are comfortable, given where you are with conservation with us, closing this and moving on, that's something that we can consider.
Yes, we are comfortable with that, with conservation.
Tim, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan. Do we have to do site plan and special permit separately, or is it all in one?
Well, we do need to, it is a modification to both the special permit and the site plan, so...
Okay, all right, dealer's choice. I'll start with approving the modification to the site plan. I move to approve the modification to the site plan.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Steve for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion from members of the board? Hearing none, I will go through the members for a roll call. Julie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Orrin?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So that is the modification to the site plan, and we do still have the modification to the special permit.
Tim, I'll move to approve the modification to the special permit.
I'll second that as well.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Steve, for the second, once again. Is there any further discussion regarding the modification to the special permit for Hearing none, I will go through the roll call once again. Julie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Orrin?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Mark, you were amazingly persuasive tonight, three for three.
Thank you, everyone, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Okay. That takes care of those two items on our agenda. Zero Rear Eddie Street has requested another convenience to our March 23rd meeting. Paul, they are getting dangerously close to not being ready for us to take action on this.
Yeah, and I think that, oh, I'm sorry, Chair.
I was going to say, they're aware of this, and they are playing with fire, as Stacy fit, I guess?
They are aware of it. I've emailed them and spoken to them about the election, and they did get a pretty significant stormwater peer review that they're going to have to deal with. And of course, they're concerned about the comments that came about from the...
Me butter?
Which I haven't heard back from Town Council on yet, but certainly before they go back to you, we'll make sure she's responded to that.
Okay, yeah, whether that's for our, whether that's for our March 23rd meeting or some indeterminate date in the future.
Right, but they're aware that April 10th, that they are going to have, if they're not approved by then, you know, so that, you know, I laid out a few options that they would, that they could take, so, including withdrawing and resubmitting after the new board, or taking a chance before, or take your chance with five voting members and you get all five. So I don't think, I don't think there are really any other options for them, but, so...
As long as they're aware, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make them drink, so I'm going to use that cliche and stop there. So before I look at any additional motions, as people may be apt to say, I do want to note that, Paul, you did put early materials in the Dropbox for the bylaws, so just a reminder to board members, to, it looks like our next couple of agendas are going to be fairly heavy, so we want to make sure that we have read those materials and digested them, and if we have any preliminary questions that we want to make sure are asked, we can send those to Paul. Paul, I know we have another meeting before we get to that point, but you do have an upcoming session on the master plan, which is for March 31st, correct?
Correct, yeah, so we'd love for you all to be there, and I know you all have been. This one's going to focus on transportation and services such as water and sewer, libraries, veterans affairs, council on aging. This is another big one. You know, I mean, where water and sewer goes is where growth should go, and so, you know, I think this is the opportunity to have a conversation about aligning our land use and infrastructure.
Okay.
You know, they did, when we did our last virtual workshop, I thought the team did a great job putting it together, and we actually got quite a few really good results from it, so we'd really love to see you all there.
Okay. Paul, have you talked to anybody at the Town Library, given that this is something that impacts their services?
Yeah, yeah, I talked to Lee Parker, the director. In fact, we're having a staff meeting, a meeting with the, with the, with Serpide that week as well, so that way the staff can talk to people like Lee and Beth Rossi and Estelle Flatt and get their input.
Okay.
And they've been invited to this as well, and I've asked them to send it out to their constituents, their boards. You know, I'd really like to see, you know, see, you know, people who will go to the senior center, attend. I'd love to get the Water and Sewer Commission at this meeting, or some of the members, anyway, and just, again, have a great opportunity to, you know, just in a good atmosphere, talk about the future of where our services should be going.
Yeah, I know that the library has a different kind of, they have a different kind of email list than we may have in other departments, so I think that's a good opportunity to broaden the...
Yeah.
The reach of what we're trying to do here.
Yeah. Sure, Lee is going to do, she always does a great job of getting the word out.
And I know we have, our next meeting is March 23rd, and then, as Paul, you emailed out to everybody, the first April meeting, we bumped that up to April 6th, so I want to make sure everybody has that down correctly on your calendars, so I know I had to change it on mine. I believe we already have the email invites, but for those of us still using paper calendars, because it's on the paper calendar, then you can't say people weren't told about it. I know that's how my life goes. Paul, did you have anything else that you wanted to discuss tonight, or other members of the board that they wanted to raise?
I just had a couple of other quick updates. Just letting you know, the CBA recently approved the 40B at 195 Mansfield, which is right next to the McDonald's. We submitted that to the state. We are above 10% now. So, yeah, you know, it's funny, or, you know, people go, you know, some developers like, oh, that's bad for us, like, no, it's not. If you have a good project, work with us, and we'll work with you, but bad project, we can say no now.
Right.
And, well, in fact, the Waiting River Estates that you all approved some months ago, I was in touch with the engineer, Brian Dunn, who said that property has been sold and that the applicant, or the new buyer is intending on building it. So once we get the regulatory agreements from that, we file that with the state battle count. count. And then we have the 253 Mansfield 40B, which is right next to Alberto's. That was, had been delayed for a while, but that, that looks like it's, it's, you know, going through the, you know, the issues are, we've had several meetings now with them again, so that'll be 60 units, 15 of them affordable, so those are, you know, projects that, you know, were they not 40Bs, you would have been reviewing those two 40Bs, so. That I, I guess we should, should also bring up, I, I sent out the email today regarding Farreland Farms, that we will need to put that on the agenda. We'll, we'll do it on the 23rd. You've had a chance to read it, but, Tim, I don't, I don't know if you want to go, you know, discuss...
I don't think, I think that what was in the email summarizes the issue fairly succinctly. We've been given a court order and we will take action on that appropriately.
Does that order, I mean, does that preclude any conditions, even standard ones, or it just wasn't clear? I understand they didn't want any of the, was relative to that particular purpose, but...
Orrin, I can ask Council that.
Okay.
I'll ask her.
Okay. Any of the members of the board have anything else that they wanted to share or discuss?
Tim, motion to adjourn.
Uh, Tim, do we need to vote to defer the Zero Rear Eddie Street application?
I'm not sure if we did that. Good catch, Kevin.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you, Julie. Kevin, would you like to make a motion on that?
Um, I just did.
Okay.
Motion to defer the March 23rd meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Kevin, for the motion, and Julie for the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Julie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Orrin?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Zero Rear Eddie Street used, continued to the 23rd. Julie, would you like to restate your motion?
Going once, going twice. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Steve, I'll give you that second, I think just before Joe. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Julie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Orrin?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you very much, everybody. Quick and efficient agenda this evening, and we'll see you all virtually in two weeks.
Good night, everyone!